Welcome. Thank you all for joining us for tonight's town council meeting. If you have a phone, an iPad, or something that might beep, bling, or play us a song, please turn it on silent. We will stand for a pledge of allegiance, then an invocation. So, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for being able to stand before you this evening as we do the town's business. Please guide us to make the decisions that are fair and good for all. We are grateful for this time, this season, and all the people that we enjoy working with. Thank you in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Council members, you have received the minutes from our November the 11th council meeting. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Mr. Pettit, do we have anyone signed in to speak this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay. We do not have any presentations for this evening, so we'll move directly into old business items. The first old business item is second reading and public hearing. An ordinance adopting a budget amendment to accept the Fire Safer Grant. Eric Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Agenda item number one is for Budget Amendment 25-01, which is the Fire Safer Grant. Approval of the attached budget amendment after this reading will establish the financial structure necessary to receive and expend funds associated with the Safer Fire Grant. This is a three-year grant that will actually span four fiscal years. Grants are for salaries and benefits only, so most non-grant match is actually going to be in year number one. Total now of the grant is $1,075,000. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'd like to comment that for those that might watch this later, grants aren't just given because people look out across the vast majority and say, "Oh, they deserve one." Grants are given to those that apply, that work hard to create the situations that those that have the grant money want to see the investment go the furthest. So, for us to get this type of a grant, there was a lot of work that went into it from our staff members, and I'm so grateful that that work exists and brings the money to benefit all of the community in Fort Mill. So, thank you, all of our employees that work hard on grant nominations. Thank you.
And kind of re-- going just a little bit deeper on that, it was the effort put in of letting us know there was a need that we needed to have, and bringing some metrics to the table, letting us know that it was a justified need, and then being able to go find the resource for funding. Great job, staff.
Great job, staff. Any questions for Eric? Additional comments?
Public hearing.
Oh, is it on there?
Well, I'll be dagumed. It is. Let me open that public hearing.
We will open the public hearing now for this agenda item number one. Going once, going twice. Public hearing is closed. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve old business item number one.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Old Business Item Number Two, I will not be tricked again. Second reading and public hearing. Virginia, on future agendas, will you put that public hearing first on the order, please, so that I won't...
Big, big old littering, too.
Thank you for guiding me, Virginia. Thank you. This is an ordinance adopting a budget amendment to construct Fire Station Number Three. Eric Davis.
Yes, ma'am. The following three, actually all of the budget amendments, but especially the next three, this is the second reading for all of these. But this budget amendment is for a total amount of $25 million, and is for the approval of a budget amendment to facilitate the construction of a Public Works Operations Center. We've already begun work on the operations center with soil testing and space needs design work that has already been completed.
I think you skipped one.
Yep.
We're on second item. We're on second old business item two.
Oh, wrong. I'm sorry.
I gotta do a public meeting for each one, so I can't do them all together according to my attorney.
Sorry. They've got them out of order. I apologize. I apologize. So, this is for Fire Station Number Three. My apologies.
That's okay.
So, this one's for Fire Station Number Three. The budget amendment amount is for a total of $9 million, which will facilitate the construction of Fire Station Number Three.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All righty. We're gonna open the public meeting at this time. Public meeting is open. Any comments? No comments. Public meeting is closed. Counsel, do you have questions on the budget amendment to construct Fire Station Number Three at a cost of $9 million? Again, this is second reading on this item.
Make a motion to approve old business item number two.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now, Eric, let's go to old business item number three. Second reading and public hearing. Ordinance adopting a budget amendment for the Public Works Operations Center.
Thank you. This one, this budget amendment is for $25 million. As counsel will recall, the town secured a grant, again, from the state of South Carolina with tremendous help from Representative Felder. This amendment only covers the grant funds that have been already received by the town from the state, and it does not obligate any additional monies at this time. Be happy to answer any questions that you would have.
We're gonna open the public meeting. Public meeting is open. Any questions? Public meeting is closed. Yeah, we will continue for as long as I'm able to thank Ray Felder for securing the $25 million to contribute to our needs here in our community. The $25 million will go a long way towards an operations center and will allow us to improve service and dependability by having a better facility to work out of. So, I'm very, very grateful for this, and again, for everything that's staff. Mr. Pettit, I would like to recognize you because when Ms. Felder was Representative Felder was asking for information in regards to what our needs were, you very quickly put together a very nice presentation that she could use to secure these funds. Once again, it requires staff to take a lot of action and a lot of behind-the-scenes work for us to be able to obtain the type of funding that assists us with our taxpayers. So, thank you, Mr. Pettit. That was an excellent job. Questions? Hearing none. I'll call for the motion.
I make a motion to approve old business item number three.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve old business item number three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Old Business Item Number Four. An ordinance adopting a budget amendment to facilitate multiple capital projects for fiscal year 2025. Eric Davis.
All right. Thank you. So, budget amendment number four totals $13.9 million for a variety of capital projects and purchases for this fiscal year, and I'm gonna just go through those briefly. In the hospital tax fund, hospitality tax fund, it's been a lot-- it's been a rough day, I tell you.
I understand.
It's been a Monday all day long. The hospitality tax fund, we're increasing the budget by $500,000. These reserves will be used primarily for two projects. The first is to aid in Phase Two improvements at Walter Elijah Park, as well as improvements to the farmer's market site. These funds will also supplement the $1.85 million that's already been budgeted, as well as a $175,000 PAR grant that's been awarded to the town. We also have $325,000 that is being appropriated from the Water and Sewer Fund cash reserves. Those funds will be used to help purchase equipment for a dump truck, a paver, and a roller to help with some road improvements. That would be associated with utility repairs throughout town. And then finally, we have the general fund, which is a total of $12,75,000. Funding for these, for this amount will come from two sources. The first being fund balance, which is $4,575,000, and the rest coming from the Capital Reserve Fund of $7.5 million. There's a number of projects listed there, from road paving and reconstruction to park improvements at Millstone Steel, Hare Street, Calhoun Street, as well as YMCA facility improvements and the Fort Mill Community Center renovations. And then finally, the Stormwater Fund will have a million dollars in cash reserves appropriated to help with funding at Hare Street Park and various improvements throughout town.
All right. I'm gonna open the public meeting. Public meeting is open. No comments. Public meeting is closed. Couple of things. I think it is important when we begin to spend taxpayer monies on improvements and upgrades and new things that we justify that expenditure. I think it's important at this point in time to point out the activities that happen at Walter Elijah. We've been able to provide a resource for our entire community to enjoy almost every holiday. On the days it's not a holiday and not an event, that park is well-used. It's soccer games, volleyball games, people walking, people sitting in the swings. It is truly a gift to Fort Mill that continues to be one that I'm most proud of. So, to continue those improvements, I feel it's justified use of taxpayer money, and I know my council members here feel the same because we talk about it a lot. The farmer's market entertains over 800 people every Saturday during the season that we open it. It's an incredible resource and a gathering place for our community. It makes us really and truly what we say we are, a community of people. This particular addition will also enhance safety at that site, so I'm looking forward to seeing that in place. So, if we could kind of take these in chunks, please, Eric. Counsel members, do you have any questions or concerns to express about the farmer's market or Walter Elijah?
I have just a general question on all of them. I know this is kind of a preliminary tentative budget to get the projects kicked off. When will we get more details on each one of them? So, Mayor mentioned a couple of projects comes out there. I know that's what we've allocated so many funds, but we'll need to come back with details before we actually spend the money.
Right. So, the budget amendment would authorize the expenditures of the funds, but I believe with the weekly update that the town manager provides to you and the monthly updates that we give with regards to the budget, we can touch on the capital project specifically if you would like, just to kind of let you know where we are with that. If you would like for us to come back to you before, I guess, major expenditures are initiated.
Absolutely.
Perhaps with...
Without question.
Okay.
And that's kind of where I was going. I wasn't gonna take it, but there again, when we implement new expenditures...
Right.
My question is always, you know, what problem are we trying to solve?
Right.
And how do we know that we were successful? So, I think, the mayor mentioned the parks. I think we all are in agreement. They need some love.
Sure.
Well, I think the YMCA obviously needs some love. The Fort Mill Community Center definitely needs some love, and some of the others. I'd just like to know before we commit, you know, significant funds, what are we buying? What are we trying to solve?
Right.
How do we know that we were successful, that this was a very good endeavor? I do thank you all for putting a tentative budget together so we can get moving on some of these projects.
Right.
But we also, I think we want to know, you know, what we're investing. We're seeing taxpayer money spent, so I'd like to see the details before we actually cut a PO.
Exactly. Okay.
Absolutely.
And I agree with Councilman Wolf. We're held accountable, and being accountable, people do ask, you know, "What are you doing?" And I think it's important that we talk about so many things, but we do need to make decisions on those things.
Right.
We can't just talk about them and then see an implementation. Council sets, priority sets, the policies, and staff executes that. So, I do think we have to be very careful to always vote and be, you know, make sure every council member is fairly represented in that decision before we start spending that money.
Okay. Will do.
Any further questions on that?
Not on the first one. The second one I do.
Okay. You wanna start?
Sure. I'll move in. The next one actually is the next two somewhat, the Water and Sewer Fund and then a piece of the General Fund. When I see $325,000 going towards a tandem dump truck, a paver, roller, milling attachments, this is roadwork. And then when I see another number two under General Fund, another million dollars for road paving and reconstruction, I'm really struggling with this. This is a whole new department that we haven't been doing on a regular basis. We've been contracting it out, to my knowledge, when we had projects that came up that needed paving, and when we had concerns, and to just put $1.3 million towards a project that we don't even have a department for yet, that we haven't vetted the need, that we don't even know what the toll's been spent from contractors in this calendar year or prior. I need more detail before I can approve that new information to happen. Carrie, I mean, would you like to provide a little?
I would be happy to provide some background there. So, there's monies in there, including the $325,000 that would go towards the purchase of a tandem dump truck. There's a milling attachment, a paver. It's not gonna be a paver the size that's gonna allow us to do highways or anything, but something that's gonna allow us to do utility cuts, one-lane roads, eight-foot wide asphalt trails, things like that. The million dollars that's in there is for contracted services. So, we're not proposing to take over the road program and do all of that ourselves, but the equipment would allow us to do base repair, which would ultimately allow us to do more road repaving on an annual basis because we're not paying the contractors to do all the base repair prior to them coming in. They're gonna just come in. We're gonna contract out publicly bid milling and paving work. So, it's kind of a hybrid of what we've been doing.
And how much of an increase is that from what we spend in this current calendar year?
From what I understand, the town traditionally has not spent much money on an annual basis. I think this last year, there was $170,000 that was in the budget for road repaving. The town doesn't-- I'm gonna be cautious in how I say this. The town has taken a great many number of roadways because of all the new construction. There's also $500,000 in this last year's budget that's just a set aside because we need to start accumulating monies. So, as these roads start to age out, the average useful life of a road is anywhere between maybe 17 and 20 years. These roads are gonna start aging out, and we're gonna have just multitudes of miles of roadway that we're gonna be responsible for repairing and repaving. We need to start setting that money aside. So, we have started to do that. The roads that are proposed to be repaired and repaved this year literally have grass growing up through them in the cul-de-sacs and whatnot. It's been so long since they've been repaved or repaired.
I think this is one of the more, geez, seems like in our fats I said complex. This is a complex situation for the general public. We don't own a great many roads in Fort Mill, and we haven't until we started taking over the new road systems and new developments. And, you know, when we get a lot of questions and concerns in regards to road improvements, road widenings, road maintenance, you know, that has typically been given to the responsible party, which is the county and then the Department of Transportation of the state. I think we have to be uber careful that I get the requests so that when we do go out to patch and we do go out to cut, that perhaps this will save us money going forward. But I also am very concerned that there be any intinuation that we would ever be able to actually pave roads and do that level of work because we're not built to do that. To Lisa's point, we don't have a staff to do that. I'm not saying we won't in the future, but I am saying at this point in time that I haven't seen that in a proposal. So, we do need to know, you know, what level of staffing would be required as an increase to manage the equipment. What level of improvement would we see to offset? How many years would it take us to pay it back once we purchased it? And I'm sure these are things that you can do, but I do think that's vital information for us to make decisions over a million dollars to buy equipment and do work that we haven't done in the past and that we don't have staff to do.
Yeah, just to clarify, there's no additional staffing that's gonna be required. My understanding is the town has in the past contracted on a limited basis for road repairs. At this point, the town's got miles and miles of roadway that is in dire need of repair and replacement, and this is just a drop in the bucket. This is getting us started.
Do you believe on whole, Carrie, that once the drop in the bucket occurs, we're gonna be able to ramp up and meet those needs?
I think it's similar to every other community I'm familiar with. I think it's going to be an ongoing basis. So, Public Works had an assessment done of all town-owned roadways. Those roadways were ranked using radar technology. They were ranked anywhere from a, you know, it's in good shape and it needs, it does not need to be addressed, to it needs to be completely reconstructed. This million dollars is not going-- it's about $750,000 at the very least is gonna go to the reconstruction, repair, and repaving of four roads. That's it. Because those roads, we've lost those roads. They were...
Are these roads in new developments?
They are not. No, no. These are town roads that the town has owned for quite some time, and they're deteriorated and just need to be addressed at this point.
Just to regurgitate, make sure I understood that. So, the 325 under the Water and Sewer Fund would be like when we had to dig up the roadway to fix a water line or whatever. We would now be able to fix those.
The 325 is gonna be merged with some additional monies from Capital Reserve to allow us to purchase some equipment. But exactly right, Chris. If we dig a trench, repair, replacement, et cetera, if we have our own paver, our own milling machine, and our own roller, we'll be able to repair those much larger cuts on our own as opposed to having to contract them.
And then the million dollars is actually just to be for, we'll use contractors to do that work.
That's the...
It's just money. We're not doing it. It's just money a set aside to do some...
And they're gonna drive that truck we're gonna buy?
No.
No, no.
That grinder we're gonna buy?
No.
See, some-- this doesn't marry up for me. Help me.
That's our Public Works crew's gonna be able to do that in conjunction with our utility crew. But there's two separate pots of money. There's one for contracted services. We're probably gonna spend about $700,000 on contracted services this year. The balance of the money coming out of the Capital Reserve is gonna be combined with the monies that are proposed to come out of Water and Sewer, and that's gonna go towards the purchase of equipment.
And where will we keep this equipment and who will be operating it?
Our Public Works crew will be operating that equipment when need be, and that'll be stored with all the other equipment at Public Works. And when we get the operations center, you know, constructed, that's where it'll be constructed.
And that's part of my concern is that we are building an operations facility because we're out of room at our current facilities. And here we are buying more equipment, starting a new project that we really don't have an ideal location to store the equipment that we're getting ready to spend $650,000 on. I've got some concern with that at this current point in time until we have an operations facility.
If you folks would like some additional information on equipment, or you'd like to put that off, we can transfer those expenditures over to contracted services. It's just, that'll be an ongoing basis, you know. Year after year, we'll be paying a contractor to do those things rather than being able to do it in-house. One way or the other, we can get it accomplished.
What's the cost savings, Carrie, between paying a contractor to do it and buying the equipment and doing it ourselves?
We have not done a year-over-year kind of cost-benefit to this point. The, that particular model is one that I'm accustomed to. You know, Public Works departments that we've managed in the past have done all their own base repair. You know, our folks are certainly capable of that. But again, there's multiple models that we can use in order to get those things accomplished.
I'm not opposed to us doing it, but I can't make a motion, but my preference is that is deferred until we receive some additional information on the cost savings. Just from the standpoint of, I think that's critical information for us to be able to make that decision.
Well, instead of from a cost perspective, how about a time perspective? When we have an emergency repair, do we have, will that speed up the process of getting a road repaired and back open?
Yeah. So, Alan, I wish I could say yes because you kind of served me up a softball there, but quite honestly...
It was his intent.
An emergency, yeah. But I'm always gonna tell you the truth. An emergency repair, in my mind, is most likely gonna be of a size that will allow us to do that anyway. You know, so they'll either have the asphalt delivered or bring it in in equipment that we already have. You know, so it's gonna be something that's, you know, 10 by 10 or 15 by 15. It's stuff that we're already doing.
Let me ask you this, and I think I speak from the neighborhood that has the most repairs in it in Wyville Park. Would this equipment allow for a better quality repair versus the put the gravel down, put cones around it for two weeks, then come back and hand-tamp asphalt in it?
Well, again, I think what the reason they do that is to allow the stone in the backfill to settle.
Right.
Ultimately, if we have very large repairs, trench, things like that to do, it would be a higher-quality repair. It's not going to affect the timing of installation.
What about the milling machine? What type of things? I'm familiar with that being used on concrete sidewalks where roots may cause a portion of it to raise. Is there any other place?
The milling machine we're looking at purchasing is an attachment that would go on the front of...
Skid steer or something.
Thank you, because that was escaping me. A skid steer could go on the front of a couple of other pieces of equipment that we have. The base of Railroad Avenue, when you cross the railroad tracks, is a perfect example of a road that needs milled and repaired. Monroe White has got a number of areas up and down the entire roadway that need saw cut, milled, and then asphalted. So, that's really a perfect example of a road where we would use this equipment. Things would be saw cut, milled out, and then repaved, and then ultimately the contractor, after we go through a public bid process, and this group awards a project, a contractor would come out there and eventually do the overlay.
So, it's not the type that grinds down sidewalks where they're uneven? This is a much more...
This is gonna be a larger...
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think, I wanna summarize because I think it's important. Carrie, you've experienced in previous work situations where in-the-house repairs and work made sense and worked for a variety of reasons. In the past, we've approved budgets to contract that work out. This is a proposal to council to agree to spend money to buy equipment and change a process that in the long run, hopefully, will save us some money. I still am of the mind, I think it may work, but I'm of the mind that we need to see if it's gonna save us time or money before we agree to spend money. I'm not saying we won't. I'm just saying I think that's a critical part of when we agree to spend a million dollars, it needs to be for something we know we're getting what back.
I would propose this to council. If you would like additional information on, you know, return on an investment, things like that, we can try to get that put together for you folks, certainly before we produce any POs or anything like that. At the very least, I'm telling you, we have enough roadways where if you approve that $1 million in the General Fund, we can use that for roadways. There are a significant number of roadways that a contractor can address.
And we hear about those roadways on a regular basis, and God rest my daddy's soul, but I can hear him in my head right now. So, you're gonna spend a million dollars to do a better job of it, and we're never going to be able to repair everything that's out there. So, I'm more in alignment with if it helps us. I just need to know how much and how, and then I can be persuaded. But until I know how much and... But until I know how much and how, are we going to make three miles difference a year? Are we going to save a million dollars in four years? Are we gonna? Because I don't see our utility crews being lazy anywhere. So, I don't see where the extra time and, and workforce that's required to accomplish this work is going to come from. It's going to require that we hire more people.
I, I'm here to tell you, we will not be hiring more people for this.
And, and just, I'm kind of going back to my original question, the million dollars is for the contract labor, just exactly what we're doing now?
So, originally, that million dollars included approximately three hundred thousand that was going to be used for equipment. But I guess my proposal to council is if you want to just approve the budget as it's been presented, before we proceed, we'll present you folks in, in a public meeting with additional information. But one way or the other, w- we need that money. It's either for the purchase of equipment so that we can do the base repairs, or it's for contracted services, so the contractors through the public bid process can, can undertake those activities. But it's-
I don't think there's any question about, we know the roads need, need work. So, that's, that's like, that's the clarification. Maybe you'd have broken it out, but there's, so there's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at minimal that are going to be contracted out, just like what we're doing now.
Yeah, the, the mayor had mentioned three miles of roads. My, my initial goal was one mile. We're, we're not getting that. I, I'd be asking you for about three point five million dollars if you wanted to get anywhere close.
That was just funny.
Yeah, no, I understood, I understand.
What was, and before Carrie came, what was our process, um, to make repairs, to hire the contractors? I'm aware that our utilities department would annually go around with the town manager and look at all the roads, given the utility department's belief that they travel them more than most other than maybe the fire department, police department. And they would point out the ones that were in the greatest need. At that point, what data did we collect to say these are the ones we're going to do?
Well, historically, what we've done, as far as utility repairs, we would, you know, contract that service out or make the repairs ourselves. But for larger projects that, that Carrie's speaking of, uh, um, typically, we would provide a request to the county and, and see if it was approved in a C fund, uh, and, um, that would be where that m- money came from.
Do you off the top of your head know how much in C funds we've received in the last year?
Um, the C funds, I think that, uh, we received this past year would go towards, uh, repaving one neighborhood and it was a few hundred thousand dollars.
Was that Sterling?
Yes.
And moving forward, the C funds, I've been told by Debbie Conider, are all being reallocated to Highway one sixty project.
Yep.
Just for future years, is what I was told by our county rep, so.
Well, two of us sit on our fats, and I can tell you that that was not discussed in those terms, uh, by the county representatives there. So, that doesn't mean it isn't happening.
I know, that came from the Debbie Conider herself to me in the Sterling neighborhood issue, where there was an issue where there was a, a problem there, and we went to that and worked with her and Chris on that issue, so.
Yeah. I, I'd like to not do this until I know there's a process that I can go, I'm so proud that we've developed this process and implemented it.
Is there a way for us to get a current list of the roads and the data that you said that's been collected so that we can understand and know which roads are ours? Because part of what this is going to stir up is everybody reaching out saying, my neighborhood's worse than your neighborhood. I mean, now that he's brought up Whiteville Park, you know, just driving back behind Walter Olajia this past weekend after the parade, um, you know, I even sent you a picture of a pothole that needs some repairs to it. Um, you know, I think it's important for us to understand what roads we own and we're discussing here versus what roads, um, may not be, uh, and just have more data about the projects that we're looking to have on the radar in the next coming years.
I want to make sure I'm not being opposed to making purchases and changing processes. I'm not. But I am saying I'd like to see a better perspective on how it's going to get us there faster, get more roads done, and save money for the public, because that's our job.
I know we're early on with some of these discussion points, but could we in the amend, or in the, uh, the motion pull, extract these items out and move forward with some of the others?
Can you do that?
And revisit with this one?
We approve with the exception?
This has got so many different-
Tentacles?
Yeah. I, I would not do that. I would, I would defer it.
Right.
And then if you want to formally amend it for second reading, come back to second reading a- as an amended ordinance, I would do that. But I wouldn't do it on a flat tear because I think that-
Can we approve it and restrict the use of purchase of equipment and keep the money in an account for contract until we're satisfied? We can do that, right?
That, that's what I, I would suggest. Um, we, we've got several projects that, that we've not signed professional consulting agreements on because the budget's not been approved and we didn't want to put the cart before the horse. Um, I, I'd really like to get those moving so that we, we can get some of these things done. So, cer- certainly, if, if you approve the budget and just restrict those expenditures, we'd be happy to provide you folks with whatever information you're looking for.
Um, I'd like to see if we do that, that we're very cognizant to make that happen prior to making the contractual agreements for consultants or purchase of anything. Because this is just a change in how we do it. I'm not saying it won't work. I'm not saying it's not good. I'm just saying I don't have enough to make me feel confident that I can say yes or do it. That's all.
Well, let me be clear. I, I, my assumption was you were going to restrict the funding of just that one particular item within the entire ordinance. Does that have anything to do with consulting?
No, that's, no.
That's what I thought.
Oh, I thought that's what it was offering. Excuse me.
No, that's, Barry and I are saying the same thing. That's, that's what we would suggest.
I'm supposed to be confident about that?
The consulting contracts you're talking about are, are related to other items within the-
Right.
Okay. So, what you were saying is if we don't move forward with approving this change, then you don't have the money to work on other projects that you need to hire-
Other, un- other projects unrelated to roadway construction, repair, repayment, et cetera.
Unrelated, correct.
And a quick question on the consulting, or sorry, the road construction work, the million that we have, does that include the half a million that was already budgeted and carried over from the previous year?
It, it does not. That, so, that, those monies are, are segregated and we want to put those into a separate account, allow those monies to, to carry over year over year so that when, the, the town does not even understand how many miles of roadway we actually have. So, I, I had previously sent council a map that detailed county roads in town, state roads in town, and town roads in town. We actually want to get that to, if somebody had mentioned that it would be great, uh, just this evening. Get that on the website. Um, the roads in Whiteville Park, as an example, the roads on Mill Hill, they're all state-owned. They're owned by SC DOT.
Old Orchard, aren't they state-owned, Chris?
Town-owned.
Or town-owned?
Yeah, Old, Old Orchard's town-owned. Um, but, but there are really a, a lot more roads in the town of Fort Mill that the town actually is responsible for than I think a lot of people understand. So, it's really important that we kind of get, start to get ahead of that and start to chip away at this.
I saw that listed somewhere. Does GIS have that now listed on there?
It is. There's some, some errors in there.
Yeah. GIS, if you go to GIS, you can look and show which street, which county, state, or town road.
That data's generated by the county. Like I said, there's some errors in it. We're looking to correct that.
But it's a start.
I concur.
Thanks for clarification. Lisa, did I answer your question?
Yes, and just kind of adding on to what is being said with that list, I think it'd be important for us to know which of those roads that we own, we have asked for additional funding support, whether it's C funds or other money that we have available already, and whether it's been approved or denied, or it's part of pennies, or whatever bucket of money, because we know there's multiple buckets, um, out there, just to understand what's been approved and denied before we start looking at new projects that we didn't even have on the radar, so. So, if I'm understanding correctly, um, we are, if we are comfortable with everything else in old business item number four, it would be approval with the recommendation to limit the water and sewer fund and the million dollars, number two, general fund, until further advised by staff? Is that appropriate?
You would, you would make a motion and second and approve the, um, ordinance as presented with the restriction that the funds, um, for water and sewer under item number two, is it?
Yeah, there's no item on water and sewer, it's just had-
Right. The, the water and sewer expenditure for three hundred and twenty-five thousand and the million for road improvements under, um, the other item would be restricted until further approval of council.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it's a go. Anybody else have anything before? I guess there's a lot in here, so.
We've covered a lot in past workshops. I'm pretty comfortable. A lot of good projects. I feel like moving the town forward with our parks, especially, you know, the Fort Mill Community Center and the Y. I mean, it, this is a good budget that moves a lot of different areas forward. I think it's really good.
I, I want to make a comment because we meet frequently and we discuss frequently how to move forward. Um, council has adopted a get-stuff-done motto, and it has benefited us in a large way. But I think we are also a council that is very determined to get the right stuff done, um, not just do stuff, you know? So, anytime we're questioning and asking for more, that's the intent. It is not to get in the way of progress.
Eric, um, the second half of the water and sewer fund for the equipment says it's coming out of the general fund, but it's not referenced here. Can you elaborate just a little bit on that?
It would just be, uh, funds that are already budgeted in annual, in the annual budget.
And were they budgeted for this equipment?
Not for that equipment specifically.
Okay, so I'm a little confused how half of it could come to us now and the other half hasn't.
Now, the, the, the other half of that was, was to come out of the, um, the one million dollars for road repairing and reconstruction. We have, we have preliminary co- um, cost estimates for the, for the four roads that we had identified, um, you know, specifications were put together, et cetera. They were not publicly big, but, but we did get cost estimates for them.
So, you're talking about number two, where you said it was seven hundred, seven fifty in construct, in contractor fees? That would leave a balance of two fifty, but yet that's seventy-five thousand less than what half of water and sewer fund for equipment would be.
So, if we did a three twenty-five and three twenty-five, then there would be six seventy-five for, for the, uh, for the additional, the road paving and reconstruction.
I understand, but it was just said a minute ago that that would be seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
It's whatever, it's whatever I could eventually steal, Lisa, to get some roads paved.
Steal's probably not the best word to use.
Hmm. Yeah, I, I think we need to defer this one.
Right. Uh, I'll, um, agree to whatever or vote for whatever person would like to make a motion. Again, I cannot make motions, um, but this seems to have taken on a life of its own. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, old business item, I forgot, hang on just a second, number, old business item number four, restricting the expenditures for the paving equipment. I don't know if that's enough.
And the million dollars.
And the million dollars? Okay. And if that was something that would, had already been budgeted, it would save. So, make a motion to approve restricting expenditures for paving equipment and the million-dollar expenditure.
I have a motion to approve, um, this item with restrictions on the budget monies for the water and sewer equipment as was described.
And can I clarify?
Please.
And that would be until further approval of council?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have that motion. Do I have a second?
Say.
I have multiple seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Okay.
Okay. Um, we will now move to old business item number five, second reading and ordinance amending the town of Fort Mill procurement code so as to update methods for contracting on construction projects. Chris Pettit.
Mayor, thank you. Uh, this is second reading. There's been no changes since first reading. Um, and again, this is to update our procurement code to allow for a construction manager at risk as a methodology for us to procure construction projects. Uh, just basically adds it to the menu of allowable, uh, procurement methods.
Okay. I think this is something council has discussed a lot, and I look for a motion or a question.
I'll make a motion to approve old business item number two, five.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for, to approve old business item number five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. New business items. The new business item number one, resolution directing the Fort Mill Planning Commission to conduct studies and to develop and make recommendations for a five-year update to the capital improvements plan and impact fee ordinance as provided for in the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act. Chris Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, every five years, uh, with an impact fee program, you basically have to start over from scratch, do all of the studies again, and reconsider, uh, adopting impact fees. So, um, we started impact fees in 2015, uh, redid those in 2020. So, we are now, uh, with this resolution, starting the process to re-study impact fees to bring it back before you, for you all to consider, uh, any future continuation of that program. So, this is the first step, as outlined in state law, to start that study. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, council?
Mr. Pettit, the, in the resolution, we mentioned, uh, the different impact fees that are included, municipality facilities, fire protection, parks and rec. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, streets were originally in that, and since we are, uh, fighting with trying to come up with solutions for roads and traffic, uh, I think originally we discounted the roads to a hundred percent and just took it out of the ordinance. Should they not be put back in the study to see that if they would be beneficial to include those in?
Agreed.
Great point.
Good, good question. So, uh, we did do e- exactly as you mentioned in 2015, we studied that, uh, basically allowed council the opportunity to adopt it. Uh, but, uh, throughout the state, a lot of, uh, places that have adopted a transportation impact fee have actually gone away from utilizing that and are, are using other tools to help pay for roads. So, the biggest piece of, of an impact fee is it has to go to add new capacity. So, things that we're talking about maintaining infrastructure, none of those would be eligible expenditure. So, if council decided to go out and build a brand-new road, so let's just say the parkway didn't exist and council wanted to go build a parkway.
Please no.
That would be some, that's new infrastructure, that's brand-new infrastructure. That would be something that an impact fee could pay for. But what a lot of other communities found was that they can never collect enough money to build even a turn lane.
Yep.
And so, that's, that's where they've gone in different directions, and, and the town, uh, went in a different direction with that as well, and, and re-looking at some of the things that we did with traffic studies to help, uh, development pay for those needed, uh, infrastructure projects. So, um, it is something that can be studied, but it cannot, it cannot resolve anything that we were just talking about. It would be if there was a new road or, um-
Well, and that's kind of where I was, I'm trying not to get into weeds, but I just think it needs to be included into study because a, a turn lane would be example. I know that, I think the one at one sixty, of course, that's a state road, it's a million dollars for that. And I, I understand all the ins and outs. I just think it would be, it would be cognizant to, to include it in the study sample, and then we can make a decision whether we, when we bring it aboard.
When we were looking, uh, or when we did it in, in 2015, um, a- and we were looking at projects, um, it, it adds a, a tremendous cost onto commercial a- and residential projects. But again, even looking at our heavy-growth years, we were never accumulating enough to build even the turn lane on Claiborne, which.
So we just had to give it back because of the sunset on it?
If you didn't use it, you would have to end up giving it back and that sort of thing. So in our high-growth years, we couldn't build a turn lane, is what I'm trying to say.
But could we use that funding along with, we'll just say, general funding to put a turn lane on Claiborne Street? I just don't want to cut it off before we even have a conversation, that's all I'm saying. I understand your point and it might be very well true. I just think while we're doing the study, I think we ought to include that and then we can decide whether it's beneficial or not. If it's not prohibited, it would be additional data.
Can it also not be used for new equipment as well, for maintaining?
No, that would be the municipal facilities impact fee fund that can buy the equipment. Anything valued over two hundred thousand that's new, not a replacement, can come out of the municipal facilities and equipment fund. The transportation one was strictly a new road infrastructure or a change of road infrastructure. Honestly, I'd have to ask about the roundabout because I don't know if that would be considered. Certainly it's new, but it's.
We don't have one there.
Very, very true. But I don't know if it adds, the key is adding capacity and you're not necess. It becomes an engineered argument, I guess, I would say.
Oops. So the road impact fees only for commercial, no residential, right?
It's residential and commercial.
It's both buckets, okay.
Yes, it is, it is.
And can that be sidewalks as well?
No.
I think we looked at it historically and asked that question and sidewalks would fall more into the parks and rec impact fee from the advice that we were given in asking that question.
What is it, a five-year sunset?
Well, it's a lot more complicated than that, but it's generally three years. But.
Hence the issue.
So, yeah, again, I think, I think years and years ago, the Claiborne Street turn lane was a couple million dollars and we're looking at, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in getting money. So it's barely scratching the surface. And that was the study previously done.
Could you borrow that, pair that money if you ever were to receive like Saper grant that we talked about a while back? Can you mix grant funds with an impact fee fund and to do a project?
Sure, yeah, as long as it's, yeah, as long as it's adding capacity, you could do that.
Or general funds, yeah.
I take lessons after Mr. Gears.
Be persistent.
Chicken Bridge.
That would be my, I mean, I understand it, I think it's, well, I know it's time and I think it's done very, it's been very beneficial to the town. So that would be my only, it's just can we include that in the study and then we can take it out if we need to.
Are you making a motion?
If we're ready for that.
Are we ready for a motion?
We're.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve new business item one with an addendum to include the street impact fee in the study.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you. New business item number two, consideration to award a contract to King Asphalt, Inc. for the town of Fort Mill parking lot project in the amount of four hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents. Always find it amusing when they throw in fifty cents.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Hardee's project. We purchased this property and are converting it into a municipal parking lot. This is the amount of money that will take it from its current condition to a final, finished, beautiful, brand-new parking lot. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one. To exit in the back right corner, that'd be to that little drive-through street that goes behind the bank to come out that way to Spring Street.
Correct, yes, sir.
So just directly, nothing on the Spring Street.
Correct.
I think it's very interesting, if you look at the different quotes, how they vary in pricing, not just at the totals, but in the line items. Can you give me a little more information about the Plaza statue, which varies in price from forty-five hundred dollars to fourteen thousand dollars? So who is going to design that, approve that, build that?
The intent with that is to basically be a replica of Millstone Park's brick monument with the millstone on top and a plaque. The plaque language is to be determined, but we have a millstone to place there. So it's replicating what we have at the bottom of Main Street on the top of Main Street with a little more visibility than the one at the bottom of Main Street.
We were very fortunate that the Murray White family donated that additional millstone to us and we can use it for good. I think it will be a very nice representation.
So can you tell us a little bit about what's going on? I know we're looking at, you know, budget numbers, but what is that parking lot going to look like? I mean, the trees and all that are there, are those, you know, a significant tree? Or is it, you know, it's what it represents? It seems like that's what it would be around there, but just making sure there's intent to put some trees up around.
Absolutely. The intent is to have a nice surrounding perimeter of new, nice landscaping with, at the corner of Main Street, Tom Hall, Spring Street, to build sort of a pedestrian plaza to connect your pedestrian walkways into that incorporates the millstone, flowers, lighting, all-new lighting throughout the site to have a appropriately lit parking lot with, I believe, sixty-seven parking spaces in total. And that's an increase from, I think, once the building was demolished, there's maybe forty sitting out there now. But once you reconfigure the site, the maximum that we were able to gain was, I believe, sixty-seven.
But to go back to it, to make sure that some of the trees that are shown in here, those are going to be nicer, I wouldn't call them historical looking, but something that, you know, we talk about, what can we do to preserve that? Or I think it's a responsibility of the town to try to put some more things up in there that.
Substantial.
Yes, we're certainly not going to put twigs up and call it a tree.
Please don't.
No brad for pears.
There's some landscaping in there and initial thoughts on some of the trees is that they're just not in good shape. But anything worth saving certainly will be saved, but we'll be adding, there's nowhere near this amount of tree canopy out there today, so we'll be.
Right, oh yeah, I know some of the things that are up there are not good to keep and this transition is going to have to be replanted. I'm just making sure that we've got something that looks nice and appropriate. Like you said, that would be for something that the town feel, hey, they're contributing and making.
I'd like for us to set an example for what we expect out of others.
That's why I would have gone.
You know, because we've lost so many of the legacy trees along the Tom Hall corridor that they're irreplaceable and then they're really irreplaceable if we don't try. So I would like to set a standard for others to follow when they have to remove a tree because of disease or lightning or car accident. Let's do it right and make sure we're setting that standard we want everybody else to follow.
The one other thing that I would ask emphatically is please, please have whoever is going to do this be very mindful of coming out of Spring Street up to the Main Street intersection, looking back left. It is very hard to see back towards that entryway and to see cars because they're still at full speed coming through there. If you're trying to make a right off of Spring Street, so please be mindful of that line of sight. I know it's not typical, it wouldn't carry the same X by Y triangle that a line of sight would, but that's, being on that will rise, be real sensitive to that.
It's one of the worst places in town and people don't pay attention to that when they come up over that.
Right, and where the white line is, it's so far back that everybody has to creep forward of the white line to be able to get a left shift to turn right.
And I think some of those dash lines in this pretty picture, I'll call it, are showing some line-of-sight studies. And to your point, you know, some of the landscaping may have to move for the.
I could see that along the road.
Having to maintain line of sight. So we will do everything we can to maximize landscaping and to maximize line of sight to create a good view there.
What would the timeframe be after this approval here to get it? I know this is new business item two, so we'll have to have a second reading, so.
Weather too.
And weather.
This will just be one reading. It will not come back before you. I don't believe, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we've gotten a contract, gotten that detail yet on the timeline of when they can mobilize and that sort of thing. I think we gave them, I hate to say something and be totally off, but there is a number that we proposed with liquidated damages after that, I just can't.
You gave it to us at one time, I can't remember what the estimate was once it was all approved, but I don't remember.
I'll say what's not being said, I don't want it to be six months. I don't want to be this time next year going, wow, didn't that turn out well? I know that's not within your purview to say how quickly they can work, but I would think in a bid process, we would have a timeframe that we want it done in.
Well, another thing, temperature is going to play a part in putting asphalt down too.
Well, we're hiring experts to do it, I'd like to think they know, so.
Mr. Pettit, with the trees, was there any sort of spec on the size of those or was there any requirements for those? Because you got some prices at, you know, three hundred and eighty dollars a piece, which.
Yeah, I saw that.
Don't get you much of a tree.
Another for a thousand dollars, yeah.
Which still don't get you much of a tree, not a mature tree.
It was in the full construction drawings, I don't have that on me.
But not to throw up saplings or.
Correct, yes, no, the intent was not to do that.
So it was specified the specific caliper are larger?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
No brad for pears.
And typically, you know, I don't know, you know, there's a lot of situations where it may have specked one tree and, but oh, by the way, we could get a six-inch caliper tree of this other species for the same price. There's a lot of deals that are made in doing the landscaping, so.
It's got to be the right tree, though.
Correct, so at the time that we get to the point where we are planting, they go out to all the nurseries, they see what's available and we work with our landscape architect to make sure it's the right tree, it accomplishes what we're trying to do. Oftentimes, there are changes from what the plan showed. But generally speaking, size of tree, the intent, that's not changing.
And for traffic flow, coming in and out from the Tom Hall Street driveway, is that both ways? So if you're coming out, could you turn left and right as you currently can today?
You could, yes.
Okay, because I know sometimes that's an issue. And then the other question I had was about signage. I know particularly on the Tom Hall Street side, there's a good bit of signage, some of it required by DOT, but some of it difficult to see because of the trees, some of it going in multiple directions. Is there any way we can reach out to DOT to try to condense some of that signage and make it a little more presentable?
Maybe if we did wayfinder signs, we could take care of some of that.
Are you referring to like the speed limit signs and the no?
No truck route. I mean, the funny thing is coming from, you know, if you're facing here going across Main Street on Tom Hall, there's the truck route sign that says, you know, don't turn left, keep going straight, but it's hidden behind the tree, so there's no way a truck driver could see it and part of the reason they may be turning on Main Street illegally.
We've asked, yeah, we've asked that question in recent history in the Main Street area and the answer was, there may have been one sign that they could have taken down. I don't think there were many because it is a primary highway, so they have their standards of they want this, this sign, this sign, et cetera. So we can certainly ask again and see if any of those can be removed given any of the improvements that we're making.
That would be awesome, I appreciate that offer.
Well, I think everybody in the community is excited to get this done and I would say let's set the high standard. And if I want to throw my councilman, Hedges, a good thing, this would be in the UDO, wood trees would be allowed. And also the standards on lighting and everything else. So I think pertinent this would be, we would be wise to pick our future lighting for downtown and set start with this one so we don't have to go back and replace at what time. But I think it's a great project, it's been very beneficial to the people parking downtown already and look forward to it being completed.
Yeah.
So I have one more question. So on the price of everything, and as someone who's involved in sealed bid all the time, when you are the low bid, you always wonder what you left out. You have two bids that were within a couple percentage of each other and then you have another one that's well under that. Mr. Phillip, I guess this goes to you as far as ensuring that those have been vetted and make sure they have everything included and is a qualified contractor who's turning that low number. I know low bid got us to the moon, but, you know, I don't necessarily think we need to.
Yeah, so the professionals at Kip and Wood, they also have reviewed this and so they've made this presentation, I would say. They've confirmed it as well before it comes back to us to make the decision.
My money's on you.
There's seventy thousand dollars difference in demolition. I was like, there is no demolition. So maybe they own the wrong truck and they're renting their others, yeah, I got it. And we'll see Mr. Frugal over here on them if they're.
Okay. Do I have a motion on new business item number two?
I make a motion to approve new business item number two.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you. New business item number three, Northern Pump Station Notice of Intent to Award and Subsequent Notice of Award of Contract to Site Concepts of Oakboro, North Carolina. Eric Davis, wearing at that carpet today.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, so the item before you, the town has received bids for the rehabilitation, reconstruction of the Northern Tool wastewater pump station. We received bids in mid-October. The engineering firm that is advising us has reviewed the low bid and they're comfortable with the bid as far as the validity of the numbers as well as the local council of government. Did just want to remind council that this was one of three projects that the town applied for skip funds administered by RIA, Rural Infrastructure Authority. So this is the first project that's going to be coming before you. I will say that this project is about double what was originally intended. So what our plan is, is to accelerate the funding of the grant and it'll still cover a majority of this project. And we'll be talking to you later about the other two water projects that are connected to this somewhat with the skip funds. But tonight, we're asking for an awarding of the grant and we do have motion language in there and we would ask that that language be read out. It's lengthy, but it's due to the way RIA is administering the project, we have to do two, Notice of an Intent to Award and then once RIA signs off on everything, then authorizing the town manager to sign the Notice of Award. So it's a two-step process.
Okay. Questions for Eric? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number three.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please.
We need to read. Is that the summary at the?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to read that?
I will, if I need to. Barry, is that what you prefer?
Yep.
I make a motion that we give the town manager authorization to sign the Notice of Intent. Is this it, Barry?
Yes, sir.
To award to Site Concepts, Inc. of Oakboro, North Carolina, the construction contract in the amount of two million four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for the Northern Pump Station Rehab Project. Upon review, is that all you need, Eric?
No, we need to.
Upon review and approval of the bids by the Rural Infrastructure Authority, council for the grant's authority to execute the Notice of Award to the contractor in the same amount referenced. Second.
Second. Thank you.
And I have a second. All those in favor, thank you. Councilwoman Wolf. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Teach me to let that battery go dead again. All right, we do have three items for executive session this evening. Council, please note that council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. Please also note that we do not take votes inside of executive session. Executive session item number one, discussions incident to propose contractual matters, American Towers, LLC. Number two, receipt of legal advice relating to potential claims and ongoing legal matters. And number three, discussions incident to proposed contractual arrangements with the Fort Mill History Museum. Can I please have a motion to move into executive session?
Make a motion, we go into executive session?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you. We're back in, let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session.
This emblem, are you guys satisfied that it is Fort Mill's emblem? Because if we're trademarking it and what we should have done when we asked for it before, it shouldn't have showed up on other entities.
asked for it before, it shouldn't have showed up on other entities' materials.
In a previous life, I worked for a media company, and that trademarks and fonts and all that were regulated, it just gives you the right to allow certain people to use it or not. It's not that it can't be, they would have to get it approved.
It just meant we were going to win in court.
Yeah.
When DirecTV went with the DE with a swoosh, we took them to court.
Right.
And guess who won? The people that had the trademark.
Right, so.
It's called infringement.
I like it. To me, it's not a problem, but we do need to get control of it.
I think in our small world, our microcosm, that it can be misconstrued when you see that, that we're doing collective work. And sometimes we should, sometimes we should. But in collective work, like with the Greenway, you're going to see a Greenway logo and then ours. That's the only thing I'm saying, is that if the co-op, they need to have their own logo, and if we do things together, we put them together.
Right. It does not need to look anything like that.
It doesn't just look like it, it is that logo.
Ninety-five percent, there's not more of that logo, so.
I'm glad that your staff is working together resolved, so that we'll have complete control in the, yeah, legally when we need to, and...
That's what he said we're getting, the trademark.
Trade, it'd be a trademark.
But I think the logo, to me, I like the logo a lot better than the bandstand, and, you know, we all heard comments about us being a hallmark town during the holidays, and to me, this looks like a hallmark logo, so I'm...
It does.
Can I just say one thing about the bandstand? I saw, this is going to sound so nitpicky, please, I'm going to have to tell you, but I saw one or two of our trucks that still had the bandstand logo on it.
Yes.
Is there, maybe one day we can get them all like that, I think that'd be cool.
Sorry.
No, I don't disagree. We...
Not in executive session either.
I know. I agree that part of the issue in changing logos is the amount of time and investment to do so, and we haven't, we haven't tied that bow all the way, so it'd be great if we can do that as soon as possible.
We're good? Mr. Wolf, would you like to start the roundtable?
Sure. So as we wind down 2024 and reflect, I'm pleased with our achievements and accomplishments for the year. The events team has had another stellar year with increased attendance at all our major events. Additional staffing is in place to meet our current needs and help us move forward on new projects and goals. A long-term solution for the town hall and office space has been acquired while simultaneously protecting historic Fort Mill landmark. Work has begun on a much-needed operations center and a third fire station. Plans are underway for enhancements to our community center and several of our parks and recreational areas, and the list goes on and on. And I just want to thank the staff, this council, our volunteers, and our civic organizations for their efforts, community pride, and willingness to work together for the benefit of our community. And I'm very excited about moving forward, looking forward to 2025.
Very nicely done, very nicely done. Mr. Moody?
I don't know how to follow that.
Yeah, really. I sit here thinking, will you speak at my funeral?
Yeah, yeah.
Given enough time, he can write.
I think we need to have perform in the college football playoff, that's what I think. Hook 'em Horns, beat Clemson, South Carolina, Alabama should have made it in. Staff, I'm going to duck back, what a wonderful job y'all did on the parade and the tree lighting and the budget and everything you've done this year. So that's about all I have, so thank you.
Ronnie?
I'd like to say that Christmas tree lighting, I think that was the biggest crowd I've ever seen, and the parade this year was the biggest crowd I've seen in years. Being involved with the parade for the last fifteen years, and actually driving a car in the parade, it's bringing back memories when we was going down Main Street. It's, appreciate the staff, everything you've done this year, looking for bigger and better things next year. Thanks for everything.
Lisa?
As we're in the holiday season, it really is touching to see the tree lighting and the parade, as we've, multiple of us have said, I've been in that Christmas parade. I remember eighth grade marching in it with the band, and many years since then, so, and that's been a few years. I, you know, got down to the ball, the Main Street, and there were people four and five deep, and this is when the forecast was saying it was going to be thirty-five degrees that morning. And it's so touching to see how many people really want to come out and experience the opportunity, just to see the community. And the parade went on and on, but I'm proud of our staff and how quickly they got the people in and out, and how safely they did. When we look at the tree lighting and the angst that there was in moving it to Walter Lodge, and when you see the crowds we now have of the people wanting to be involved, I know in my heart that it was the right move for us to move it there. It's the safest place for us to be and to be able to have that sense of community. So, you know, I appreciate that decision. There's a lot of times we have to make decisions that are hard, but we're doing it in the best interest of our town, and that's what we have been elected to do. I do appreciate staff moving quickly to get things done, and we're going to have a few road bumps here and there that we have to get through, but we'll get through them, and I know we'll come out better on the other end. So as we look to next year, I continue to be excited about serving with this council and with our staff to continue making a difference in our little hallmark town in Fort Mill, South Carolina. Go Cops!
Look at 2024, to Mr. Wolf's point, of all the things that we as council and as staff have been able to accomplish and set in motion to really set the town forward, you know, for the next, you know, ten, twenty, fifty years with all these different projects. It's exciting to be part of it. To the crowd sizes, you know, this is not a post-COVID bump anymore. This is people who want to be here, who want to be part of it, so, you know, it just goes to show how well the events are run and everything, and I'm just, I'm happy to be part of this council here, and we're approaching the end of our third year, going into our fourth year, and I'll tell you now, I want to do four more after this, so, real tight.
And Ben?
I thought it was really, one of the takeaways from the parade, I think those of us up here have a very unique perspective in going down the metal and being able to see the faces, seeing the kids, even a lot of the adults. I thought that was a lot of fun, the electricity in the eyes of the kids, the smiles and the excitement, that was, that was a big takeaway for me, that really resonated with me. I thought that was really neat. And two, back in the eighties, I was able to drive my car in high school, was able to drive some of the, can't remember if it was the council person or a mayor or whatever, but my father and I got that car back in 1984, and I've had it a long, long time now, so being back in that was very special. I would like to give a special shout-out to my fellow councilman, Chris Wolf, for being my motivator, and, hey, get it done, let's get it done, I'll come over and help you get it done, let's get it done, let's get it done. So I know my mom was very, very proud since my father passed away, but my mom was very proud seeing that car back in the parade, that meant a lot. When we circled back around and went up there and hugged her, so that was a big deal. So genuinely appreciative of that. Also wanted to extend my sincere condolences to the family of Andy Burkhold.
That's awful. For those of you that don't know Andy, he's the owner and operator of the upholstery shop on Spratt Street, Carolina Upholstery, which is known all over the country, does work in Las Vegas, I mean, he is incredibly, or was incredibly talented. A little over a year ago, he didn't feel well, and he was diagnosed with leukemia, and he... Beat it. He went through all these treatments, it was horrible, and he beat it. But then he went back, he wasn't feeling well, he got another treatment, and then he had a stroke, and then he had another stroke, and he passed away. He's in his early fifties. So just a really good businessman, a good friend to Fort Mill.
Perfect example of a small businessman that contributed and cared so much about this town. His son, Dylan, has done an amazing job of keeping up the business and, you know, really has grown faster than what probably he had intended to. So lots of prayers for that entire family, so take care of them.
Really heartrending when it's somebody, we've lost so many, you know, just so many. Couple of things for me, as Mr. Wolf ran through a number of the successes we've had this year, I'd very much like to see some type of summary to review to go on the end of the year recap. So often, we hear about what doesn't go well, it's up to us to put out there what does. Otherwise, it kind of goes by the wayside, it's not as much fun to those that like to fuss. Are we meeting on the 23rd of December? That is the Monday before Christmas Eve. Since we're meeting the 18th, do we need to?
No.
Bah humbug, no.
Also have a good luncheon for the town.
Yeah, we've also got the luncheon for the town the next day, so are you guys okay not posting a meeting for the 23rd? I needed to know that so I could let you know, no meeting on the 23rd. What, when did, are we still giving volunteers a gift card?
Yes, we are, for our Board of Zoning Appeals, our Planning Commission, Historic Review Board, yes.
Just want to make sure that, is that happening like end of the year kind of thing?
Yes, they're all meeting and they're getting that.
Okay, all right. And I would like to thank staff, I got an urgent call the day before the parade from the Catawba Ridge, actually text, and then another text, the homecoming king and queen. Their people at the high school didn't tell them that every other high school was riding in the parade, and they called like, can we walk in the parade? And somehow our staff made it possible, so they showed up at our little thing at town hall. They're so grateful, I've already gotten three messages, the town's so wonderful, thank you so much. Guys, these are the people that are future taxpayer types, and they saw the benefit of being in the parade and of being included, so thank you. I know that's not an easy thing to rearrange at the last minute, but I am grateful. Tree lighting was absolutely beautiful. I can't think of a single thing to make it better other than it not be on a school night, which I'll hush about, but it was very, very, very nice. The lighting downtown somehow this year looks more special. I don't know how, but it does. Coming home from the tree lighting, I looked over and I thought, well dang, you know, that looks really good. To Ben's point in the text you sent, and to our work on Main, I really want to add lighting and the ability to put lighting on the buildings every day of the year. We need to have that, because our town does have that feel to it.
Mark your lights, would you? You look amazing.
It just looks so, so nice. Parade was fantastic. I had to say yes to John because he asked, and it was a pretty cool car, because I really liked being able to see both sides of the street. That was a little bit difficult. So, you know, we'll talk about that, that was the reason I asked for a horse and buggy for a whole of us, as nice as Santa one maybe. You know, so whatever it is, is fine with me. I just think it's, people seem to be in a good mood that day.
Oh, yeah.
And that's good for us.
Quick question on the poll we're drafting, trash pickup and all of that during Christmas week, just in case somebody hears this, leaf collection, can somebody address where we're at, how that'll be handled?
Yeah, we'll post on the website and make sure we push that out. My understanding is the only day they don't collect trash is Christmas Day, is that correct, Chris?
That's most true.
Yeah, I was shocked by that, because they even collected on Thanksgiving. I've
had a recent conversation with our Public Works Director about that, so.
Is it necessary?
I've started the conversation with the Public Works Director in reference to what holidays we collect, and, you know, whether it makes some sense to delay, you know, whether it's appropriate for our staff, whether it's the best service for, you know, for our residents, so we've started to talk about that.
Thank you. I think that's important. Those guys don't catch a break, they don't catch a break.
Yeah, I completely agree.
And I'd like to thank Eric. Today, I had a situation at a house I had on the market that the water had been turned off, and couldn't tell immediately if it was the town that turned it off. Turned out to be a landscaping company or an irrigation company that I would never hire as long as I was, had breath in my body. But thank you, Eric, I appreciate the quick work, and always that I can call any of you and ask questions and get a pretty quick answer. I don't know, it feels funny for it to be the end of the year, doesn't it? Comes and goes too quick.
It's not, we have the 18th.
We're still meeting on the 18th, correct?
Yeah, we are meeting on the 18th, and I really hope each and every one of you will be there. Okay. All right, with that, let's do that motion.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you.